This conference will now be recorded.
Evening and welcome to the Elpena City Council Meeting of June 6th, 2022. Call the order, please.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
Councilmember Noah?
Here.
Councilmember Walchek is excused, and Mayor Walagora?
Here. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. I have entertained a motion to approve the agenda.
Still moved.
Second.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Any proposed modifications to the agenda?
Nope.
Approval of the minutes for regular session and closed session of May 16th, 2022, and special session of June 2nd, 2022. Any issues or changes? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during tonight's meeting that you're allowed to address council. If you're here at the meeting live, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Begin.
Good evening, council. My name is Albert Hess. My address is 1221 South 11th Avenue. I have a business in the downtown traveling ladders at 102 North Second. I'd like to address the council tonight and the escalating fines that they're going to be speaking of in Section B later on this evening. Mr. Pfeiffer is going to be reading something of that. I'd like to commend them for going ahead with the escalating the fine structure that they're talking about. But in addition to reading the ordinance amended, 2277, about the parking violation bureau, I would like to see additional wording prohibited reparking in a block one time per calendar day. Right now, people are just shifting, moving from spot to spot, and it's not working. This will stop violators from just moving to another parking spot on the same street. Please refer to the copy, and I've given copies to different people in here. And also, the DDA has a copy of this. I've seen it done in every city, other cities, and this is what they're doing, and really highly, they were much bigger cities in Elpena, and they had areas that were really full of people. And their signage was pretty much like ours, but this sign just runs below it. All, all good. All changes made only work if we have some serious enforcement. This includes Saturday. There is no enforcement downtown Elpena on Saturday. We have violators down there that park there all day long. I see it, I don't have to go out there and just watch it. You can just tell if you drive through the city, the police drive through it, they see it, they don't stop and do anything about it. Our DDA system that they have for policing it doesn't work. The gal works once in a while on a Saturday, you understand? I haven't seen her. I mean, no matter what enforcement we do, escalating or not, it's not going to work if we don't enforce it. To finish up, I'd like to remind the council and the DDA that our tourist season is upon us, is coming up, and we're getting them in now. We're not taking care of this problem going away. We keep talking to the down, we just talk it to death. We haven't done anything about it in years to come. It's been going on for years. It's leaving a lot of our tourists with a bad taste in their mouth about coming back to Elpena, and I don't think adding paid-for parking is going to make their feeling any better about it. I mean, we're a small community, and I know paid-for parking seems to be the way people want to go. But then again, there goes back to enforcement again. If it's not enforced, paid-for parking doesn't make any difference anyway, and it's not going to keep repeat offenders from doing what they're doing. It's still cheap parking if you get one ticket a day by the hour. So I'd just like to see some action taken and less talk about it, I guess. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to take them.
I don't have any, but thanks, Al.
Okay. I get it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Pastor Joe Collins and 135 River is our church. And last time I was here, we had the discussion, or you guys had the discussion about the downtown social drinking district expanding. And just some cursory citizen thoughts about that, where we're expressing thoughts of expanding it next to the river where there's no railing and people are openly carrying intoxicants in their hands and drinking. And I'm concerned about whether that was thought through, an area along the river drowning possibilities and things like that. Does that increase the liability of our city? And has that been looked into? And then, for me, the major concern is, I work with people recovering from drugs and alcohol at Shoreline Wesleyan Church, and on Saturday evening, we have what's called Restoration Church. And in Restoration Church, there are many people who have been through extensive recovery programs, and now they're coming to maintain their sobriety to our church. And in doing that, people are walking by with, you know, the smells of alcohol and as well as just, you know, watching people go by as they're sitting in a service trying to maintain their sobriety. And I'm not saying that should never happen, they're never going to be confronted by that, but that's an additional strain on our recovery program, and I'd like to make note of that here in this, in this forum. Secondly, and a separate idea, we've been dealing with these special use permits and anticipating the increased tax revenue from them, and I would love to see some of that revenue be applied and on a percentage base to recovery programs, because we all know that as we increase the availability of things like, and you can look at gambling, you can look at alcohol, you look at smoking, and now we're adding marijuana into our community, there's always people who have addiction problems and issues, and as we make it more readily available, we will have increased issues regarding that. And I would like to see some of our tax revenue go towards a recovery program of some sort. And also, a second piece of it, I would love to see applied to additional funding for our hunt team and allowing them to be able to have more funds to be able to ferret out activity that's not within the scope of what we're legalizing here in our area. So those are two things that are concerning me, and if you have any questions, I'd welcome them.
I do not. I appreciate your input, Joe.
Angie Skiba, excuse me, 635 River Street. I think that adding parking fees to the downtown area and the parking lots is a terrible idea. You're just chasing people away. You're trying to increase traffic and people visiting and shopping, and I think you're chasing them away by doing that. And in regards to, I don't have all the details, if I was here at the meeting, there was no mention of anything on River Street having taxes going to be increased when that discussion was proposed here at that meeting. Then in the article that's put out, we will all be receiving a paper to have that discussion. Four neighbors of mine are livid. They're up in arms. We adamantly do not want to be paying additional taxes, and people want to know when that meeting is, who to contact, the name and number, and they're already writing letters to stop the, is it DDA or DBA that's pushing the?
Downtown Development.
Okay, so DDA. And they want River Street to possibly be added in there and raise our taxes. Any and all taxes that would be an increase are an absolute no for me and four of my neighbors, and they're all getting on the bandwagon and do not want it. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. And just a, just a note on that topic. So Angie kind of jumped topics there really quick, but I know what she was talking about. So the, she's talking about the proposed DDA expansion, that everyone that's in that affected area of that proposal will get a letter, and the letter will explain who exactly to contact and when the meetings will be and how to provide input. So that's coming to those in a letter form to everyone that will be affected inside of that.
And if I could just add something, Mayor. The next DDA board meeting is tomorrow at 3:00. Be right here. I'd love to be there. But, you know, please submit me a written comment, too.
Sure.
Thank you, Angie.
Thank you.
Anyone else here?
Good evening. My name's Matt Leavesley. I live at 222 Bedford Street. My comment today is in regard to next year's budget, which is going to be addressed, I think, a little more later in the agenda. The packet for this meeting indicated that the city would receive an estimated $50,000 in marijuana tax revenues in next year's budget and potentially $100,000 in marijuana tax revenues the following year. I would like to request the city council to consider explicitly designating a large portion of those yearly revenues to increase our financial contribution to the hunt program, as was mentioned earlier as well. And based on the report they gave, it seems like they receive currently $8,000 per year from the city, along with one local officer. From my understanding, this has been the same level of contribution that the city's had for several years. However, at the May 16th meeting, Lieutenant Sharp indicated that based on his experience, organized groups out of southern Michigan are selling black market marijuana at a much higher rate than it used to sell for since marijuana sales have been legalized in Michigan, and that's something that our city has decided to allow here as well. He also stated that the proceeds from those increased black market sales often go to fund the production and distribution of more dangerous drugs such as meth and fentanyl, which then eventually find their way up into our area as well. In light of the city's decisions to allow the promotion and sale of marijuana in our community, I believe that it also has a moral responsibility to use those funds to provide more resources to local law enforcement to combat the rising real-world dangers that are clearly associated with an expansion of the drug culture throughout our entire state. I also think that it would also be appropriate for the city of Elpena to provide a larger proportion of resources to the hunt program than other municipalities provide even, since over the last nine years, the city of Elpena has accounted for an average of 40% of all the arrests by jurisdiction. So of all the municipalities involved, the city of Elpena itself, not counting the county, but just the city, is an average of 40% of all the arrests by jurisdiction. According to the 2021 Hunt Report, both Preskeel County and Mount Renzi County, each contributed one full-time officer and the same amount of money as the city of Elpena. However, each of those counties only account for 6% of the arrests by jurisdiction, but they contribute, contributed the same amount in 2021. If we were to use their dollar amount and their percentage as a lower baseline and determine the city's contribution proportionately based on number of arrests per jurisdiction, we'd be looking at a yearly contribution of roughly $53,000. I realize that's probably not feasible for next year, but I think that the council should utilize the projected marijuana tax revenues to move in that direction as much as possible. I also think it would be appropriate to explicitly designate some of that revenue to programs, recovery programs, that maybe the local, you know, mental health sponsor put together for drug addiction, substance addiction, stuff like that, like was mentioned earlier, but also to increase drug-related equipment, training, and personnel that's available to our specific local city police force as well. At different times, various council members have repeatedly stated that legalizing the sale of marijuana in the city of Elpena was not about the extra money that it would generate, and I think that designating some of those funds in this manner would be a great way to practically demonstrate that. Lastly, I also noticed that there are several one-time fees related to obtaining a marijuana retail license in the city and a $5,000 renewal fee. I don't know if that's every year or every few years. I couldn't see how often they have to pay that. I was wondering if those fees were included in the estimated marijuana tax revenue calculations, and if not, I was wondering where those specific totals could be found in the reports. I believe that they might be included under community and economic development, like that category heading, but I just didn't see any specific breakouts for the marijuana licensing fees and renewals, that sort of thing. If that's not broken out there like that, I think that that would be a really helpful thing to do so people could see very clearly what the total revenues, either from taxes plus licensing fees, would be, and perhaps some of those funds could also be used in this type of manner. Also, it might be broken out in there. It's a big report with all the finances, so I might have just missed it in my search. And if I did, if someone could just kind of clarify for that, that for me and point that out to me, I'd appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Good, Matt.
I believe it's in the planning fees and planning department and general.
Okay.
I could email that to you.
Yeah. No, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? And questions, questions like that can be, you can contact Anna's office anytime, and they're always helpful to explain how to navigate through that 1,200 and some pages of. Anyone online, Charlie? All right. Thank you very much for your input. We have no public hearings tonight, so next up is the consent agenda. Excuse me. A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $459,665.98. B is the approval of street festivals on Second Avenue organized by Fresh Palette September 30th, 2022, and approval of noise variance from 10:00 PM to 12:00 AM. This date was omitted in error from the previous approval last meeting. And C is the approval of payment to Utili Financial Solutions LLC for a joint water and sewer rate study and proposed water and sewer authority agreement review of $16,250 from the water fund and $16,250 from the sewer fund for a total of $32,500 to complete the project. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Aye.
And Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next up is a presentation on the water truck innovation and staff recognition, and city engineer Steve Schultz is here.
Okay. Near the end of summer 2021, I was notified that the water truck at Public Works needed serious repair. The vehicle frame had become so rotted that it was near failing and dangerous to even drive. Fortunately, it was near the end of the season, and the mechanics at the garage would have time to repair the vehicle over the winter season while it wasn't being used. Given that a new water truck was not planned for in the budget, a new one at $150,000 or even a used one at $50,000 was not feasible. The estimate to replace the frame rails on the existing truck was $30,000. Determined to find a more cost-efficient option, Doug Riznuski, lead mechanic, and Andrew Harmon, assistant mechanic, continued to search for alternative solutions. In September, they located a used dump truck style frame and cab that matched the size and type needed for the water truck. They proposed purchasing this truck for $12,000 from a local dealer and retrofitting all the water truck equipment to it. This could prove to be a slow process, but they could work on it as time permitted over the winter months. The frame that holds the water tank, as well as the PVC piping, also needed some attention, and they took the opportunity to not just replace, but to redesign it when installing it on the new truck, on the new truck frame. The frame and piping were approximately $3,500, but were a needed improvement anyway. In addition to the efficiency improvements, safety was also considered. Operators can now perform all functions from the passenger side of the vehicle, avoiding standing in the traffic lane. Further, they are, further, they are increased and better placed safety flashers on the vehicle. This vehicle is sometimes used at dusk or dawn or even dark, and it will greatly increase visibility to passing motors. At this time, I want to formally recognize both Doug and Andrew for their innovative, creative, and unique solution, which not only saved the city a ton of money, but built a more efficient and safer piece of equipment that will last for years to come. Both Doug and Andy are here tonight, and I at least wanted to get them up front and shake the mayor's hand and have a photo op.
I will. I'm sorry. We took a photo outside.
Yeah, we have, we have the.
You know, just really appreciate it, Doug. Andrew, just really appreciate all the work, and yeah, it's phenomenal vehicle. Take a look at it. Sure, you're probably going to be, yeah, pick it up tomorrow. Very cool.
Thank you.
And in addition to, they've got, we have the citywide pride, so I gave them some blue slips for that, and then in addition, the, the staff recognition memo will be going in each of their personnel files.
Very good. Fantastic. Excellent. Thank you. Very innovative. Thank you so much. Okay, no announcements, so I have a mayor proclamation today. Pardon me. This is for Elpena Blues Week. Whereas the Elpena Blues Coalition was started in November 2003 for the purpose of furthering blues music awareness and appreciation, and whereas the Elpena Blues Festival was held in 2000, the first, first Elpena Blues Festival was held in 2004, and subsequent successful festivals have been held each year since. And whereas the Blues Coalition provides a program called Blues in the Schools Music Outreach as a way of raising awareness and educating students in traditional American blues music, and whereas events sponsored in this, in the past include blues bands at the Friday Night Downtown Concert Series, blues performers at various venues around town, and fighting hunger in our community. And whereas over the years, successful fundraisers have been held to support and promote awareness of upcoming Elpena Blues Festivals, this year's festival will be held at the Apex. The festival will be held on Saturday, June 11th, 2022. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Walagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Elpena, do hereby proclaim the week of June 5th through the 11th as Elpena Blues Week in Elpena, and urge all citizens to recognize and support the efforts of the Elpena Blues Coalition's 18th Annual Blues Festival. And a few of the representatives from the Blues Festival are here. If they'd come up, get some recognition, get the press.
You don't want to take it from that?
For the photo one.
Measure?
Thank you, guys.
Oh, okay.
You have that sheet. Good press.
All right. Next up is the second reading of ordinance 22-476, which repeals Section 38.31 of Chapter 38, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 2, Fire Prevention Code, Division 1, dash generally. And Bill Pfeifer is here for that.
Consistent with council policy, this would not be read again. This is in basic terms, our updating of the Fire Prevention Code to adopt the 2021 edition of the National Fire Code, and then some other changes as suggested by Chief Forbush. So we just need a vote, yea or nay, at this point.
Yeah. I don't have any issues or questions.
Question?
I move we adopt ordinance 22-476.
Or?
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson? And councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. Next is the first reading of ordinance 22-477, which amends Chapter 94, Article 1 and General, Section 94-2 Parking Violations Bureau.
This is the ordinance of the city of Elpena, Michigan, amending Chapter 94, Article 1 in general and Section 94-2 Parking Violations Bureau. I will simply highlight the changes under Section 94-2 Parking Violations Bureau. A will now read, the city clerk shall, subject to the approval of the council, establish a convenient location for the Parking Violations Bureau. Appoint the chief of police or his or her designee to administer, excuse me, the bureau and adopt rules and regulations for the operation thereof. There is also some cleanup language in here. This was not gender neutral. It basically said he, he, he throughout the ordinance. So this has changed in certain spots to them or their versus using he. In terms of Section 94-2, D1, or excuse me, E1 through 13, the main change is that going from the system of 10, 20, and $40 fines, this adopts a new fee schedule of 20, 40, and $80 fines. It does keep parking in a handicap zone and parking a vehicle or boat trailer on city-owned property in terms of the launch lot. Those, those stay the same, but everything else goes from 10, 20, 40 to 20, 40, 80. And then we added a section, this is new, and it says, "Any individual in violation of any of the offenses listed in subsection E1 through 13 may receive a citation more than one time in each calendar day if the individual is in violation of subsection E1 through 13 multiple times in the same calendar day." So there had, the old ordinance did not address that, and there had been folks that had been multiple times offending in the same day, and the policy had always been to only write them one ticket. This will now allow the parking enforcement officer to write more than one ticket for multiple violations in the same day by the same offender. This ordinance shall take effect 10 days after being adapted by municipal council and duly published.
I'm not sure who wants to start. I guess I will. I don't know. Matters. In, in response to the, the no reparking, the sign was, this was offered up by the Hesses earlier. It says, the, the sign basically underneath the no part, or the hourly rate says, you, no reparking, you may, you may park on this block face one time per calendar day. The, the issue I have with that is that, I understand where a lot of, where a lot of this talk about the issue with parking, I understand where it comes from very well. And I feel that if we literally tell people, including our visitors and tourists and our own, and our, and our community members, that they can't park on the same block more than once per day, we're kind of doing a disservice to a lot of the businesses downtown, because if they come and they shop at one store in the morning, and then they come back later to either shop at a different store, or have something to eat, or get their hair done, they can't park on the same block, if I understand this correctly, even if there's spaces available, because they've already parked on that block. I'm not so sure that it, that something like that is even enforceable, but, but the reason I don't like this particular sign is because of that. I would rather go with the last statement that Bill made in the new revision of the ordinance, saying that you can, you can be ticketed for a, for a overtime violation more than once in a day, because right now, I believe we only ticket a person once a day, so once they pay their $10, they just stay there all day because it's not going to go up. With the new reading of the ordinance, which I, I think I agree with, is that a person can park in a parking spot, if it's a one hour, they can park there for an hour, but if they go over, they're going to get a ticket, and if later in that day, their car is still there, or they've moved to another one and they've overcome the time slot, then they can receive another ticket, which, to me, I think would be more fair to, to people that are abiding by the rules than, than to just say that they can't park there at all on the same block. That's kind of where I'm at with that topic, and I'm, and I'm okay with the way that that part is written, and I don't know if, will this stay on the same topic, because I've got another one.
Question at first about that.
But it's, so I'm understanding this statement correctly. This just means that if you violate the time again during the same day, then that can be. And, and I'm assuming that this is enforceable, that we've already talked to the enforcement bureau?
Yes.
And they can, okay.
Yes.
Because it's a tough job. That's a tough job to enforce this stuff, so. So if everyone's okay with that, I'll just kind of move on. I don't, I guess I'm just not really, I didn't really want the fees to go up, but it's been proposed that they go up, so I'd. So I, I'll just entertain maybe some conversation from you guys before I, I'm really not, I wasn't really excited about going from $10, $20, $40 to, to $20, $40, $80, but, you know, maybe.
Most of the people aren't going to exceed the two hours, I believe. It's like, it's the individuals that will park all day in the same spot, and there has to be something short of towing their vehicles to, to make it painful, kind of. And so I can, I can go along with this, this light here. It's, it's not like it's going to be hitting everybody all the time with this.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I had, I have no problems with the fees. Well, I think this, from what I understand, puts this, you know, in line with a lot of other areas. I'm, from what I found, anyway, I thought we were in the ballpark on that end of it. I don't have a problem with it. I know when I visit other cities, I, you know, I don't look at what the fine's going to be, but I don't overpark. That's who I am, so, you know, but I think you're right. Danny stated it, it basically, sometimes the biggest violators are the ones that are here on a regular basis, and they figure it's paid parking at the $10 fee, you know, so I don't have a, a problem with that at all. I think that's good. I think as far as a sign, signs are left to your own interpretation, and I agree with what the mayor stated about, sometimes if you put a sign up like this, sometimes what it states is basically, it can be a little bit confusing, and it will cause you to maybe park in a, a different area or not come back to an area. I know when I was confused in parking in different cities and stuff, I parked way away from that and maybe not visited the area, so I have experienced something similar. So I probably wouldn't, you know, be in favor of this, you know, unless we, we continue to, you know, see issues. I'm willing to, to work with any of the businesses down there to continue to, you know, try how we can improve this, but for right now, I'd like to see this other, other statement and the multiple things. My question that I had is, you know, we said multiple times, so I'm assuming if you're, you're parked there for six hours, you know, and it's a two-hour spot, you can be ticketed up to three times. Because the clock starts once you receive the first ticket. If you're not moved, are you going to be ticketed again?
Yeah, I think that's what the intent is, to try to get people to not sit there all day for, for $10, which has been a consistent problem over the years, and that's been, I don't want to say the only complaint that's been made, but that's been a, a main theme, main complaint for many years amongst many of the folks that are downtown every day, is that some people just will take the $10 and park right there all day. And so I wanted to try to, you know, eliminate that by not only increasing the fee, but also advising people they could give multiple tickets in the same day.
So my thoughts are, I'd like to see, you know, how this all shakes out, but I think this is probably a better way to enforce it, and I don't think we're getting to the point where that sign in its own interpretation would, you know, move people out of our downtown area. So I think I'd rather see this enforced for now and, and not go the route of the sign. That's my thoughts.
And this, these fees only apply during business hours, so I think it goes from, what, 8:30 till 6:00? What are, what are the hours and Anne's on?
Oh, on the?
Oh, yeah, I'm attending virtually. So, yeah, right now, the enforcement hours are between 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM is when the.
Eight to six, okay, okay.
So somebody's downtown for dinner, this doesn't apply, unless it's, you know, during November 1st to April 1st.
Right. I know we had a lot of discussion when we first put three-hour parking in the downtown, just based on some studies that, you know, I found where the average downtown shopper is two hours and 45 minutes. So we extended beyond the typical two hours to get us to three hours, so there's plenty of places to park down there. Yeah.
Mayor, I think we will be discussing this at the DDA Board tomorrow as well, so there we'll, we'll bring back any additional input.
Okay, very good.
I do have a question about this, and this may be more for Attorney Pfeiffer. So in the, in the budget that is proposed to be approved today, it has in the fee schedule the previous amounts, $10, $20, and $40. So if we change these, are we going to do that?
We'll just amend it. We did it last year, because we approved, we approved some fees that were amended like three months later, just last year, so.
Okay, so it would take effect 10 days after it's published?
Published, yep.
So it's most likely going to be printed with the previous streets?
With the what, I'm sorry?
With the old fees. The budget would be?
Well, assuming the council passes this on the 20th, if it gets in the paper within a few days, and it's going to be whatever 10 days after a few days is, that's 10 days and a few days, so. So sometime early, early July, you know, if it gets in the paper on the 22nd or 23rd or 24th, then it's going to be the, the second, third, or fourth where, where this new fee schedule will go into effect.
Okay. We'll figure it out.
Yeah, I suppose knowing that there's a possibility that it's coming, I might hold off on actual making hard copy prints of the budget. I'm so looking forward to getting mine right away.
Expect to book record on it.
Yeah, I, you know, then I'm fine. I'm fine with the, the way it's written. So this is the first reading, so of course this won't be voted on until our next meeting, so if anybody has any issues, or if the DDA has any issues to ring back to us before then, that would be appropriate. And Rachel and Anne are both here. The Mr. Hes, Mr. Hess mentioned weekend enforcement, and I'll just, now, you, you kind of heard that, and so I'll just send that back to DDA to discuss how that will work, because they, and the bureau, to be part of that as well. So thank you, Bill. And anything else on that before we move on? Next up is the first reading of Ordinance 22-478, which amends Chapter 12 Blight, Article 1 in general by the addition of Section 12-8.
This is ordinance number 22-478. It is an ordinance of the City of Alpena, Michigan, amending Chapter 12 Blight, Article 1 in general by the addition of Section 12.8. So Section 12.8, penalty for second or subsequent violation, will now state, "A second or subsequent violation of this article shall be a misdemeanor, punished with a 90 days in jail and/or $500 fine." And the provisions of this ordinance will take effect 10 days after being published.
Okay, and the, and the biggest, and, and so the reason for that, you, someone explained that to me very well, was that you this morning?
I think so. I, I don't remember what I told you.
I don't remember what you said either.
I mean, basically, we've been, you know, tickets are our last resort. Okay, so we try a lot of soft enforcement prior to anything like that, but we do have multiple properties that are just problematic, and we keep issuing tickets, but those, we were informed, what, like, three or four months ago, that those are no longer going in front of the judge. They can go pay the ticket, or they can not pay the ticket, and, and I'm sorry, Bill, what happens when they don't?
If they just don't show up, don't pay it, don't respond, they're just defaulted on the ticket.
Right.
They're just sent a bill that says you owe $110 or whatever is imposed. And, and what's been occurring is, we then don't get what we want, which is compliance. We want folks to clean up their property. We don't want them just to pay 110 bucks to the court. That really doesn't solve the problem. So the thought was to have the opportunity to charge a misdemeanor for the regular folks that repeat and, and don't clean up, not with the idea that we want to ask the court to put anybody in jail, but just having that, you know, as part of our toolkit, so to speak, gives us more oomph, gives Steve more oomph when he's out talking to folks that, you know, because sometimes people ask him, well, what's going to happen if you don't, if I don't clean this up? But he says, well, you're going to get fined, and so they, they just don't clean it up. And then some of them don't clean it up and don't pay the fine either.
Yeah.
They, you know, they get the bill and it just sits there. And so there's really not, there's not a lot of enforcement to it if people take, you know, take that avenue, and right now, they can take that avenue. So this gives us an opportunity for the chronic offenders or the repeat offenders to give us, you know, a little bit more enforcement.
Very good.
If we issue multiple tickets, then, you know, it takes months and months to see something happen, and that's not fair to neighbors. Just to add to this, something that building staff have been working on is putting together information on resources to offer to property owners that have issues with blight. For example, if you have a, a car or something that needs to be taken away, here's a list of individuals that, you know, will come and take it, or maybe deal with a little bit of money. That's just one example, but trying to put, build those resources within the department to be able to hand out when we're out and see cases like this.
Okay. Excellent. I think both of those are very, very good, very good tools to, to be able to make some happier neighbors and cleaner cities, so. Anybody, any questions about that before we move on? There'll be a second reading at our next meeting. Okay. Thank you, Bill. Unfinished business, this, the next topic is downtown Alpena social district expansion, and, and Gentry is on the, online to guide us through that.
Yeah, I guess if there is any questions after the memo that was presented and the proposal to expand the social district, I'm happy to answer those, but essentially, we were proposing to expand it into the Boat Harbor area, into the second parking lot, which the Harbor Advisory Committee recommended as well, and then along the Thunder Bay River on the north end, so that would incorporate from where Alpena Furniture is up until where the Noah facility is.
Okay. And, yeah, I, I don't, I don't have really any major issues with that. We discussed with the police department and with the Downtown Development Authority that there weren't any issues regarding it, other than a little bit more accumulation of trash, which I think we've already kind of established a system for that and some containers for that. And with, if there's no incidents, and it's been a positive reaction from downtown, I really don't personally, I don't have any issues whatsoever with the expansion. It really just makes it easier at the Boat Harbor for them to function with festivals and things like that, I think, so. I don't know if anybody else has any issues.
I don't have any issues with the expansion.
Yeah, no, I, the same thing, you know, I've, I've heard, I've gotten a couple of calls, both were in favor and positive. You know, talking with Joel and the other police last year to see if there was any violations at all, we had none that were reported or incidents or anything like that, so I really, you know, with all the consideration for all the additional topics that were brought up, I, I don't have any issues with the expansion on that at all.
Seem to be positive input from businesses that are involved just like this so far.
Yeah, and the citizens who are using it too. I mean, that's, you know, one of the things that, you know, I, I've received over the last year was how much people appreciated us willing to, you know, expand it and take a chance on it and, and understand how it was. And, and if we do start to see incidents, we can always, if I'm understanding correctly, we're able to rescind.
Yeah, and so as long as people are being responsible, which apparently they have been, shouldn't have any issue.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed social district expansion.
Second.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you, and thank you, Anne, for your work on that.
Yep, thank you. I will submit that to the Liquor Control Commission.
Thank you.
And next we have new business, so this is fiscal, sorry, fiscal year 22-23 budget. Fiscal year 22-23 budget adoption resolution is before us. The appropriations resolution 2022-07, the adopt amended 21-22 budget is before us, and to adopt the city water and sewer rates for 22-23.
One change, it's very minor, it's in the fee schedule, there was something in there that's from a 1953 resolution for parades, circuses, and menageries, a fee of $40 per day. So we would like to remove that.
Remove it or raise it?
We have, we have not been charging it anyway.
Oh, okay.
So it's not something that we do by practice, and it's just cleaning it up, and, I mean, we don't have menageries, which is assorted animal shows.
You had to look it up, didn't you?
Yes.
Yeah, and I, you know, the, the budget, you guys worked really hard on the budget, there's a lot of really good stuff in there. We came across some, some good funds this year from both grants and from the state, which is appreciated, to address the concerns that were brought to us this, this evening. I just, I, I don't, we can't jump into that right now on this year's budget as far as changing what we allow, what we allow to hunt, because hunt, hunt requests from us, and being on the hunt board, that budget is put together by several counties, and there's, it's, it's not really complicated, but at the same time, there's bylaws that are set up, and the state, state kind of helps run that as well, and so, you know, if Joel is the voting, right now, Chief Jet is the voting member on, on that committee for us, so I can speak with him about your suggestions, but that's certainly not something that we can just automatically do right now before we approve this budget. Kind of the same as far as what we do with, with any revenue that comes off of the marijuana. I mean, in, in my opinion, we don't have that yet, just speaking of, and so, so that'll be something that we kind of maneuver into as time goes on, and we actually start receiving funds from that, so not so much to affect this budget if everyone agrees.
Probably won't be received until about the spring of '23.
Right.
Is that when you receive the actual funding from, from those taxes?
I believe so.
Yeah.
I would not be opposed then to noting that, that whatever monies are set aside, be set aside for next year's budget, so we can have a, a good discussion on that, because I am in favor of what was presented. You know, I, I'd like to see those funds used. I understand we have some administrative stuff that we have to take care of, and I, I respect that, but I'd also like to see, you know, I, I think there were good suggestions on recovery and enforcement. I think that those are appropriate, as well as education, I mean, setting aside for some, some monies for youth education against drugs. I think that would be a good use of those funds as well. So I think those are all great considerations for council to take under consideration when the funding does come in next year, so.
Okay.
That would be, you know, however we can do that, if we can either notate that for our discussion this next year, I know it's in my notes going forward, or if we can make like a formal request that that be said. And then also too, for, you know, staff to at least give us what they feel is appropriate, you know, so we can cover all the administrative fees, because I understand, and I have seen the time that has to go into that, that there is considerable expense.
Um, we'll have a better handle on that, you know, after we get through.
Okay.
A year of this.
It was a mouse or a complete guess, I had no idea.
It was a shot in the dark at the 50 and 100, it could be a lot more than that, I don't really know. I mean, it doubled from the year prior, so.
Yeah, well, you won't know until.
Yeah, right.
We'll never know until it's time, so we'll have that discussion later as far as what we do with that, those funds.
If I, if I may point out too, the county gets money because we allow medical marijuana and marijuana too. They don't have any expenses that we have, so you might want to bring that up with them as well.
And there are some conversations going on about, you know, what that could be used for.
Very good. So before us tonight is the fiscal year 22-23 budget adoption resolution. Does anybody have any issues or things they want to bring up about the actual budget this year, or we can go ahead and start approving?
Yeah.
So I think we'll need four separate motions then?
Yep.
The first one, if you want to, if Charlie wants to go to, it's on page 22 of the actual budget document.
When you get through these 1,200 pages, you can find those.
Are they in the same order, Anna? Are they in the same order as our agenda? We can just approve them off the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
And if anybody wants to review them, they can most certainly go back to that document.
And before we do that, again, Anne, I thank you and your staff for all the time and hours that you guys put into this, and, you know, taking our discussions and our questions, and asking just simply, what page was that on? Or, you know, how, where did that go, and, and so on? So I appreciate all the time and effort that you guys. So I appreciate all the time and effort that you guys put into that, so thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the 22-23 budget resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Let me adopt the fiscal year 22-23 appropriations resolution number 20, 22-07?
So moved.
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Aye.
And Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we'll adopt the amended 21-22 budget?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
And Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we'll adopt the city water and sewer rates for fiscal year 22-23.
So moved.
Support.
Mayor Walagora?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
And Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you.
Do you need a motion to remove that fee for parades and menageries?
Oh, we already removed it.
Okay.
They weren't waiting for us.
So it was in there?
Okay, thank you.
Covered that, thank you. All right, next up is the water production plant fluoridation options and the engineer Schultz is here.
Right. In December of '21, in response to supply shortages and shipping issues, Sue has presented options for changes to or elimination of the addition of fluoride during the city's water production process. Several months have passed and after purchasing additional fluoride, staff has also met with Eagle and has reviewed other options and prepared to offer the following for the city's, for city council's consideration. We have confirmed the addition of fluoride is not required by state of Michigan or by any federal regulatory agencies. Ultimately, city council can choose to continue or cease to fluoridate during the water production process. The only requirement is that we host a public hearing and allow citizen comments and publish the appropriate public notice if we choose to stop the process. The primary reason that this is up for discussion is the rising cost to, and due to the limited availability of the powdered fluoride, as well as shipping timelines and inflated costs. After an exhaustive search, staff has secured additional fluoride, but the only type available was sodium fluoride, which is not the typical sodium silica fluoride that we use. This new product, while still powder, is a lower concentration of fluoride, causing us to use more and to acquire the actual, the actual appropriate levels in the water. Also, it is more expensive and the price continues to rise since we first purchased it. The yearly cost for our previous product was approximately $7,000, $7,600 a year, and based on the required usage at the lower concentration, this new product would cause just over $33,000 per year. The fluoride currently on hand will last through July. Staff has actually recently, since the, since this memo, we located an additional supply of the previous product, which is what we prefer, and we are negotiating to purchase enough to get us through the fall with the option to purchase more pending a decision to continue adding fluoride tonight. We would purchase that after July 1, if we, we go that route, but we do have enough to get us through the fall at this point. Our current options are as follows. Option one, we continue, can continue to order whichever powdered product might be available. The more expensive, lower concentration fluoride seems to be readily available at this time, but it's at an elevated price. The less expensive, higher concentration product is sporadically available and we will order that when we can. Overall, long-term availability for both versions of the powdered products seem questionable and no vendor will guarantee a price for any longer than three months at a time. Option two is to convert to a liquid product. Liquid is the most popular method of adding fluoride and is most available as it is manufactured in the U.S. This method of adding fluoride can be a more toxic environment, but is safe if done correctly. The equipment and safety renovations could cost upwards of $100,000, but the yearly cost of a liquid fluoride additive is approximately $20,000. Option three would be to cease the addition of fluoride to water altogether. As stated before, the process is not required, but would necessitate a vote of city council following a public input session and then followed by a public notification process. Option four is to suspend, not cease, but to suspend the addition of fluoride temporarily until costs begin to equalize and global chain issues rectify themselves. Staff would continue to search and purchase the product as it becomes available. Council may suggest a threshold to spend on a yearly basis to guide staff whether to purchase and reinstate the addition of the product. And like I said, we've got, you know, we've got enough now, get us through the fall time. They said we have an option of purchasing those other two pallets that are sitting there now, but tomorrow the pallets might be gone, so I, you know, I don't know. Got Mike Collins here, the water production plant manager, if we have any technical questions. But I just, I lay the options out there and we would just request some, some direction where you want to head and how we can follow up on it and, and maybe a timeline.
I think Steve, if I understood the options correctly, if we continue on the powdered, even at an increased price, it would be less than if we decided to go to the, the liquid with the initial investment.
Initially, I mean, you always get, you're using that constantly, so I mean, eventually you're going to get to that $100,000 mark, you know, to, to build that room, so.
Yeah, I don't know where council is, but you know, this is one of those issues where I kind of really leaned heavily on the professionals in that field, dentist and dental hygienist and so on, just to see what kind of impact they have seen within our own community. You know, along with the health department and such, they, you know, highly speak in, in favor of this continuation in some format. So for myself, you know, I'm looking at continuation on the powdered for now, if we can have it and, and look at what threshold that would be. We've been doing it for years, it, it has shown over the years that it has made a difference within our community, at least from whom I'm speaking with, and, and I would like to see us at least continue that practice. So it's kind of where I'm at, I'm kind of speaking for the dental professionals, you know, who spoke here before and, you know, kind of spoke in favor of it. I think that, you know, prudent at times that we all call in professionals and try to get an opinion and, and do the best we can with the information we're given, so that's where I'm at.
I was kind of looking at the overall elevated cost as it's going to be going on throughout the years just like this. The only thing that we could possibly go into is the liquid, but that is a more dangerous product, kind of like this, it's highly corrosive. At what point, what level do we curtail the spending at this, what is not even required? So we do have a cost which is going to be passed on to the users of the system, so that means the citizens of the city.
Are you looking at me, Steve? Guess I'm fine right now with the fact that we have enough to just continue as we're going until fall, because I'm really not prepared to decide on this. Global organizations that are just, their only topic is to, is to get municipalities to stop fluoriding the water. I've read a lot of their documentation, I've read quite a bit of the, of the social media pages that are set up specifically for the same reason. We've heard quite a bit from the dental community, so I'm just, yeah, I'm just not really, not really ready. You know, there's been several municipalities just in Michigan alone that have discontinued the use just recently, and so perhaps this warrants a conversation with them as far as how they, how they came about making their decision at the same time. You know, there's some pretty big arguments out there as far as, as far as whether it's, whether it's our position to, to medicate people through their drinking water, and that's basically what we're doing, whether we think it's good or one organization thinks it's good or another one thinks it's bad, it's still what we're doing. So I'm kind of struggling with that argument, that is that what our purpose is, or should we allow people to do that on their own without having to go to a, another water source, whether it be bottled or filtered, in order to do that? So I'm really just not ready to make a decision, so I guess we'll just kind of keep going as, with what we have, because you have enough that you've already purchased now.
Right.
The fall, which is going to be.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's what I estimated, that new pallet that we've got coming.
Probably in three months.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I don't think I'm ever going to be in favor of changing, converting to the liquid. It's not really all about, all about the money, even though it is a pretty big chunk to do those renovations, but just from what we've been presented to us as far as the toxicity and everything else.
I know.
And the corrosiveness, I don't think I'm ever going to be in a position to.
And I mean, we, the $100,000 is, is a guess at this point, because this is such a specialized thing that you go out for prices on it and people want to get paid to, you know, evaluate your system, evaluate the space you have and to make a determination, give you a price on the room, they want some money for it, so that's.
To know that number correctly, the city would have to hire a firm to design a system.
Yeah.
It could be $10,000, it could be $20,000, I mean, for the system plus the fees for the design.
Right.
The $100,000, it's a large ballpark number.
Right, yeah.
You know, and, and for the future, if we're going to continue fluoridating, I believe in 10 years, the liquid will be the only option.
Right.
In the whole world, there's three suppliers that make sodium silica fluoride. There's about 10 that make sodium fluoride and there's hundreds that make the liquid. The liquid's produced solely in the States, it's a domestic product.
Yeah.
So every city that's fluoridating is moving towards liquid. It is the future. Basically, it's the, you know, the digital platform that we're on, the tapes, you know.
Now it makes sense.
It's going away. We will have to make a change.
Yeah.
Fairly soon.
Okay.
I believe.
And it's more corrosive, so we'll have more money spent on replacing pipes than we do now too, correct?
Well, that's why it would have to be designed.
Just the environment itself is, it's not.
Correctly, designed correctly.
Yeah.
I was just speaking to a company that installs fluoride systems this past month and they thought that number was crazy high. You can do it, there's ways to do it cheaply with sensors and stuff that monitor things and that stuff, I have no knowledge of.
Okay.
Just buy it to design it and have a professional engineer for it.
Okay.
I don't build systems, I just run them.
Right.
So if memory serves me correct, about 10% of the water that, of all of the water that we put fluoride in is people actually consume, right?
I think I remember that from the prison.
Yeah, it was something, yeah.
So Sue has did that study, so you, the, the mother company did the study and, because it was, you know, something like that is, you know, and then they broke it down even further from of that 10%, however many of them are under the age of 16, which is supposedly the only age that it affects.
Yeah.
And so you look at it and you say, well, you know, it's a very small fraction, but at the same time, it's the, it's the dental community that's, that's fighting for those, those individuals, even though the percentage is pretty small, and they can't possibly know, I mean, it's a good, it's a good estimate based on our population probably, but they can't possibly know how many of those parents aren't allowing their children to drink the water because they don't want it in their system, so it's, probably gives a good average, but.
And, and I've read a lot about this, and it just seems to me that when they started putting fluoride in the water, it was a good thing, as long as it wasn't too much fluoride, because then it did bad things to your teeth. But since they started doing it and everyone got on board and started putting fluoride in their water, there are so many other ways to get fluoride in this day and age, from your toothpaste, your mouthwash, you know, your dental visits, it, it naturally occurs in the environment, you can get it from foods like broccoli and watermelon if memory serves me, but so many ways to get fluoride. I'm just, I'm leaning towards stopping it, that's, that's where I am unless somebody can bring me an argument that's better than, than anything I've read so far. And, and it's one of those things, there's a lot of studies on it for and against, but there's really not a lot of definitive.
On either side.
It's a bad thing.
Yeah.
And I would rather err on the side of not putting something in someone's system that might be causing them harm and let them get it, because if, if you read the toothpaste, if your kid swallowed toothpaste because there's fluoride in it, you're supposed to call poison control. So to me, that's kind of scary, if you're not supposed to consume it, maybe we just need to think about it. I'm open to information, I'll read anything anyone has to give me, but I tend to lean towards stopping it. It's me.
Okay. Well, great presentation, Steve, thank you. Now everybody's going to feel like I just say that, but, but no, we appreciate the, the data and the update on where we're at.
One other question I have, has Eagle ever changed the amount per billion or whatever, however they, have they ever changed it?
Absolutely. And I restarted in '04 and it's been years prior to that, the most we could put in, the optimal level was 1.2 parts per million. They lowered it about 10 years ago to .7, so almost half. And that's because people can get it everywhere else, they realize that people are getting it in other places.
Thank you, that's good information.
When it was first introduced, Michigan was one of the first places in 1952, or I think I'm going to start in 1952.
Yeah.
Think about the number of dental providers in the dental care community in 1952. How many dentists did Alpena, how many dentists did Michigan? There's so many more now.
So when it.
That's why they're lowering the amounts, because they're getting dental care, they're getting fluoride treatments annually, so that's why, I mean, it's just going to keep getting lower and lower, I believe.
Yeah, and that's the toughest part about all the data that's been placed in front of us, because, you know, I read, I read a pretty, what seemed like a pretty legit article about the test, it was Grand Rapids, Grand Rapids was supposed to fluoride their water and the, and the base, if they called it a, a base for the study was somewhere else, like Muskegon or something, and so they were supposed to study the, the effects of fluoride and, and dental care in Grand Rapids versus, I'm just going to say it was Muskegon, but I'm not, I'm fairly certain it was, and they were supposed to do this over like the course of 10 years, and Muskegon started fluoridating their water before the study was done, and so the data was somewhat flawed, but everybody got so excited about what it was potentially doing for the people i- in Grand Rapids that, that municipality started fluoridating the water for whatever reason before the study was actually completed. So now making it difficult to say, okay, well, well, let's pick another town that stopped fluoridating it and 10 years from now we'll study them, and we don't know how many people moved into that municipality from somewhere else, and so it just makes it almost mind-boggling to try and figure out what, what useful data is and what useful data isn't. But, but I guess what you're saying is we have these four options, but we don't have to choose one right now because we have enough to get us through the fall, but we probably should choose something very soon.
I would think we'd want to have a decisions in that September, October timeframe, kind of look at that, I mean, I will certainly buy more come July 1. The budget, the budget will certainly allow it, I, I added to the supplies budget for, just for this reason, so we can, you know, I can purchase some right after July 1 if they, if, they're, they're supposed to be holding two pallets for me, so we'll see. If I can buy that first pallet after July 1, it'll take us, you know, a little bit further down the road and, and, you know, give us some breathing room and we can make some decisions. Yeah, it's, I mean, you, you can certainly go down the rabbit hole in a heartbeat, just online and looking at things and studies and whatever, and it's, you can, you can find what you want to find.
Exactly.
Side of the argument.
Yeah, that makes it very difficult.
Do you want to postpone it to September or, or maybe even schedule a, a public input session? We kind of already have, but it would be.
It would be specifically for, yeah.
Ceasing the addition of fluoride.
Yeah, um, hmm. I would almost, I'll just say it out loud, I was just, I'm, I would almost be more in favor of having a public input session on fluoride in the water, other than, rather than saying we're going to have a public, we're going to have a public input session to cease the addition.
Okay, right.
Because we're really kind of still kind of all over the map, and so maybe now, maybe sooner than later, it would be a good opportunity to hear from the public rather than waiting until we've kind of formed our opinion, so to speak, because if we wait until September and we need to make a decision by October, you know, I might be more prepared before then. I might be more prepared before then. So maybe if we, if we can schedule a public input session on this topic, perhaps even outside of a regular meeting. I know it's summertime, so I don't know if I really want to delve into having more meetings on top of the meetings we're having, but the discussion could go really long.
Yeah. Eventually, yeah.
So.
Can I ask a question, Mayor?
Yeah.
So if there's no requirement, no state law, no federal law, why does the city have to have a public session where we, before we can say we're not putting it in?
That's, that's an Eagle, I mean, attending our Eagle meeting, that's what they told us that we had to have, and it, and it happens that way because city council was originally voted to add the fluoride.
That's what I was told. I don't know if they know that for certain, but I believe it was voted in by the people in the 50s. So that's how Eagle, the state of Michigan, would like to see it removed, you know, by council after the.
By the council, yeah. Yeah. After a public input session, yeah.
Just as long as you listen to them.
Oh, so it was the people that actually voted?
No, it wasn't them.
Oh.
But it was council.
Oh, it was council.
An input from, before you guys make the decision.
Yeah.
And want you to, if you're going to remove it, remove it the same way that it was brought in, basically.
Okay.
And, and has anyone looked up those minutes from when they put, voted to put it in? Was there public input at that point? Their minutes are a lot more detailed back then.
Yeah, they were. I'd have to, I guess I'd have to look and see, we can kind of lift that up, not, not positive. Yeah.
Um, yeah, so let's, um.
Do you propose a schedule in August then? Sometime, one of the August meetings?
Yeah. How about, how about, how about this? Assuming that, assuming that now that the budget and things are kind of, some of the things are off of our table, how about if we, can I leave it to, to staff to, when you see an agenda that's coming that's very light, and just put it on a regular meeting, and then announce a public hearing? Is that something that's possible, or do you just not know what an agenda's going to be like until the last minute?
I think we have to notice it. We might have to publish a notice on the public hearing. Is it public hearing or public input? I don't know if there's a difference.
I think we need to go back and see what was done.
Yeah.
In the 50s. It's going to require a little bit of research.
Yeah.
And then we can propose something.
Okay.
If you happen to find the minutes from that meeting, can you pull?
Absolutely, yeah.
Appreciate it. And if you need help going through them, I, I can.
Are those?
I'm not available to help. Like reading the budget.
Same.
Okay.
Now, are those, how were those typed in the 50s? We got some old books. Okay, that's what I thought.
There was, there's been a lot scanned. No, there's been a lot scanned and OCR'd, so they're text, text recognizable, so, yeah, but maybe not that far back. They were probably written in cursive.
I don't know.
No, we have some really.
Yeah, in the 50s, they weren't typing them.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so we said?
What do we, what do you need from us?
We're just going to postpone it until they have the, until they have.
And just directing staff, right?
Yep, and in the meantime, you have enough currently to get us through the end of July, right? You just have to order some.
We already ordered it.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep, it's on its way.
Okay.
I got a bill for it ready, so it must be on its way.
What's on hand is through July, and what's coming through October.
Yep, that's, that was my estimation, yeah.
Time to make a decision.
All right.
Do you need a motion just to postpone it?
But I didn't ask for a decision in here, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The presentation.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to vote on anything.
It's probably safer to postpone it.
Why do you look at animals?
She needed feet. Feet though, don't you?
I could say that, she'd make me help look through the minutes, so I.
All right, let's postpone it and pick a meeting when you're com, when you think it's comfortable. Second meeting August, first meeting August?
Well, we could postpone the topic to like maybe the next meeting, just to give us time to research it.
Just, I think doom and gloom all the time. You, you're hoping that pallet comes in.
Oh, well, yeah.
If it doesn't come in, then it's got to be quicker, because you only got it till July, right, right?
Yeah, I mean, this is the typical contractor that we deal with, that we always ordered this product from, and, and gave her the PO on Friday and ordered it, and she said it's on its way. So I mean, I, I don't have any doubts.
Well, if it doesn't come in, if it doesn't come in or we run out, we're just, we're basically forced into.
Go to her office and get it.
Well, they're the ones that had the PO last year, and they fulfilled the whole PO, so.
Yeah, and they never delivered.
So we'll just suspend.
Yeah.
Option four, we'll be forced to option four if we run out. It's, there'd be no other option.
I think.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Very good. We're going to make a motion to postpone, that'll refer back to staff?
We're going to postpone until the first meeting in August. First meeting in July, the next meeting.
So are we, are we, at that time, going to have the public input session, or just to hear back from staff?
No, I think we're just going to hear back from staff at that point with possible minutes from the other meeting.
Well, because we have to look at what was approved in, in the minutes, and if there was a public hearing, because we're talking about public input session versus public hearing, which are two different things. So let's, we have to mimic, as I understand it from Eagle.
Yeah.
How we, how it was brought into our water supply.
I'm curious as to if it was really even brought up. I'm just hearing it from my state regulator, who wasn't around in 1950, how this, you know? You know? It might not have been, so your system might be exhaustive. My car, you might not find anything.
Why don't we, I, I would suggest that we postpone it to the next meeting to give us time to research it, and then we can bring you an update then.
Okay, so moved. Yeah, that was easy.
Okay.
I don't know why we have to do it. It's not required.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
And Mayor Walegora?
Hi.
Ocean trade.
All right, thank you. Next up is the 2022 City Concrete Program Bid Recommendation.
In April of 2022, city received an open bid for the annual city concrete program. Bid documents were sent to seven firms, as well as posted on the city website, with three bids received per the attached bid results, with bedrock Redlow at eighty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and ninety cents. After reviewing the proposed prices, it's my recommendation as city engineer that we award the city concrete program to bedrock contracting for the 2022 construction season at the unit prices outlined in the attached bid tabulation. This contract has an option of one year, of a single one-year renewal. Further, the resident cost for sidewalk replacement in this program is established at 60% of the cost for installation of four-inch replacement sidewalk. This cost would include both the contractor cost of $5.87 a square foot and the engineering cost of 35 cents per square foot, totaling $6.22. 60% of this cost would be $3.73. It is my recommendation as city engineer that the property owner sidewalk rate be established at $3.73 per square foot. This, this represents a $1.10 per square foot increase over the 2021 rate per square foot. These bids, and as many of them come in, we're seeing substantial increases, and that's one of the reasons why we rebid this project, this project this time. There was an option to renew, but we have that cap on our renewals at the standard of wage, you know, increase, and we knew that they either wouldn't be happy with that, or they would try, you know, to ask for more just based on gas prices and, and, you know, worker availability and things like that. So we elected to rebid it, and, you know, we certainly saw that increase. So, you know, it's something that we've been expecting, and we've seen in other, other projects. So it is, it's, it's the nature of the beast at this point right now, so. Not typically, no, I don't think so. No, no. Nope.
Well, the question is for you, Bill, I'm assuming there's a couple of motions in there. One for the, the residence fee, and then one for the, the bid itself.
Correct.
Okay. I have no questions, Mr. Mayor.
I don't either.
I don't either.
I move we award the city concrete, concrete program to the bedrock contracting for the 2022 construction seasons with the option for renewal of one year at the as-bid prices.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Walegora?
Hi.
And Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
And I move that we set the order rate of 3.73 per square foot as recommended.
Councilmember Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Walegora? Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Ready for my speech? I move we adjourn to closed session to discuss an update regarding the proposed litigation with Alpina Prototype Bio Refinery LLC, Process Incorporated, and Grand Bio LLC. And second, the attorney-client privilege information regarding Rashi, I believe I'm pronouncing it correctly, Lodging versus the City of Alpina Tax Tribunal, docket number 21-002701.
Mayor Walegora?